Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. It is six P M. Just so everybody's aware, we are recording via Zoom, also Local Access Network, and it's also going to be livestreamed via Facebook. If anybody else is recording the meeting, please let us know so we can let everybody else know. You're purposely welcome to do so if you choose so. If anybody's going to be speaking tonight, you need to identify who you are and what your position is with the town or if you're a resident. That's a requirement for us being able to use Zoom. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And if nobody has signed in, please make sure you sign in at the front door here. That keeps a record of who attended the meeting. Okay. So first thing on the agenda is a progress update by Tektron Architects on the town's financial feasibility study for a new public safety municipal complex. Okay, we have a presentation for that. And welcome. Do you want to identify yourself?
I will.
Thank you.
I can keep this in here in case I need it. Looks like I'll be able to see fine right there.
All right.
My name is Jeff MacOrany. I'm a principal with Tekton Architects with offices in Hartford and Providence. Perfect, yeah, Providence, right.
All right. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure. Well, obviously, we have our opening slide here, but let's move forward and take a look at the agenda. And then I'll spend a little bit of time giving you a little bit of background about myself, my firm, and the players that are involved in this study. But our agenda for tonight is we'll recap some of the study goals that were outlined because of the nature of the grants that are supporting this study. We want to talk about the scope of the study and the things that we're working on at this point, the things that are underway versus the things that are yet to come. We want to talk a little bit about the programming results. And I'm going to say this right now, this came up a few months ago, and I'd never heard this one before, is when we talk about programming in architecture, what we're talking about is there's a list of all of the spaces that make up a building, and the program is what we use when we design. We take a look at all those spaces in the square footage and use that when we're designing the building to make sure that we're meeting the program requirements. In a community meeting not long ago, somebody thought I was talking about computer programming. The computer just spit out these answers. I haven't got it quite that smart yet. So, yeah, we listen to the feedback from the people we interview. We write down what the space needs are. We translate those into square footages. So we'll review those programming results. And then we'll take a look at some site test fits. Site test fits are something we do early on in the process. It's basically you take a look at a site, you take a look at your program, and you figure out, can this site support that program? It's not a final design by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a test to say, yeah, it doesn't work. Can you do it? And then we'll have a little bit of discussion there at the end. So before we go look at the study goals, I'll give you a little bit of background. Again, my name is Jeff MacOrany. I've been doing public safety facility architecture now for thirty-seven years. My team at Tekton, we have a whole group that is dedicated to public safety design. And I've been with Tekton now seventeen years. So we've got a good group of people with a lot of experience in these very particular kinds of buildings. And, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's security provisions or communications issues at a police station or whether it's health and safety issues with the fire department. There's a lot of emergent trends that we look at and make sure that we're thinking about in the design of our facilities. Likewise, we also have town offices in this program. I don't want to forget that. I've had extensive experience over the years doing town office buildings, town halls, programming work along those lines as well. But also, our team is supplemented by H two M architects. Dennis Ross, David Pacheco, and Katrina Pacheco are good friends of mine. We've had a fifteen, sixteen-year history together. H two M specializes in fire station design. So they've done more fire stations than... My resume has got like three hundred on it. Theirs has at least twice that. But they are participants in this process. They did the programming with the fire department, and they will be consultants when we do conceptual design later on in the study. And of course, we also have some engineering consultants that are part of the team. Fosse and O'Neil is our civil landscape, environmental hazmat consultant for any work that requires those expertise. CES engineers is our mechanical electrical plumbing fire protection engineers. And Johnson structural engineering is our structural engineers. For much of the scope, those players will have a smaller part, except Sivil, who'll get a little more opportunity to look at my test fits and make them better if we move forward with any of them. So we've got a big team of people that are working on this. And I'm just the tip of the iceberg in terms of the team. So I wanted to make sure you understood all the people that are involved in this. So let's take a look at those study goals. So I know that people up here are aware of this, but the town was a recipient of a state grant from the executive office for administration and finance to conduct this feasibility study focused on new public safety facilities and municipal complex. I sort of summarized the major goals because of where the grant originates with the administration and finance office. It's really meaning heavily on the financial outcomes of this process. So it's about making sure that you have the information to analyze the financial costs of engaging in a project like this, looking for opportunities for savings or cost offsets, and then making sure that this process includes an education of the residents on what the impact, what's the tax impact going to be at the end of the day. So all of those things are some of the big goals that we'll be looking at in order to meet the requirements of the funding for the study. But there's also a lot more that goes into that. And so we've got our study scope, and I... You can leave it there. Our study scope does paraphrase. There's a few more things in the official contract, but I wanted to make sure we got the highlights. We're doing the space needs for police, fire, and town offices. We're looking at what are the advantages, disadvantages to multiple or single buildings? So it's an analysis of, you know, where do you save money? Where are the advantages to scale versus, you know, or the additional costs that you may face with combining buildings? There are site evaluations and test fits. You don't have a specific site in mind. There was sort of a favorite at the beginning, but we've done some work on that, and we've looked at a number of others. So we'll show you some of those drawings and where we're at. When we settle down on a single site, we'll do an environmental desktop review. That's like equivalent to a phase one environmental. If you were to purchase a site, you always do a phase one to identify any historic environmental issues that might be there so that you can decide whether or not any additional testing is required or if there's a potential for mitigation costs associated with the project. We also have some preliminary geotechnical investigations, so, you know, some initial borings to take a look at the subsurface conditions. You know, you can encounter rock, or you can encounter water, or you can encounter contaminants, all of that stuff that you need to be aware of when entering in to a project on any particular site. So once we've identified the site, we'll do that. Conceptual design for the selected site. As I said, what I'm showing you tonight is test fits. Those aren't real designs. We haven't sat down and designed a whole building yet. So once we narrow down the site options, we'll do an actual design, show you what the floor plans look like, show you what the building could look like from elevations and perspective and site plan. And more importantly, we'll use that information to generate a project cost estimate. At Tekton, we always use outside third-party cost estimators. I've been in this business long enough to know that we can tell ourselves stories sometimes. You know, if you want the number to be something, it's easy to talk your way into it. So I like having the objective viewpoint of a third-party professional cost estimator. And then we flush that out to give you a total project cost because it doesn't matter what the building costs. It matters what the project's going to cost the community. So we want to make sure that you have all of the potential development costs in that estimate. Again, that comes later. We also do a tax impact evaluation. We'll work with your finance office to understand, you know, what is the bond impact and what does that mean to the average taxpayer so that you have a realistic expectation of what you're going to pay in taxes if we move forward with a project. And then we also have the liquidated asset valuation. Basically, that is if we abandon, if we leave any of the buildings to build new, do we get any money back for selling them? So if you skip ahead here, those ones with the check marks are the ones that we're already working on. But I want to stress one thing really important here. I consider all of this to be living documents at this point. We're not at the end of the study. So conversation, discussion, evaluation, criticism, all of that is valid because that's what's going to lead us to a better product at the end by making sure that we all understand the things we're doing, why we're doing them, the basis behind the decisions we make. So we'll look at all the things with check marks tonight. But again, it's still a living document. There's still plenty of opportunity to fine-tune everything here. So moving forward. So we've done initial programming, and we've looked at this a few ways. First off, the first document we're looking at right here is the space needs program. If we did a police station only, we're going to see a fire station only. We're going to see a town offices only. We're going to see a police and fire station combined. And we're going to see a police, fire, and town offices combined. So the first one here is our police. Again, there's a few documents that go into this programming. The one that you're seeing up here on the screen is what we call our space needs assessment. That is backed up by a document we call our room detail sheet. The room detail basically is a description of everything we heard in our interviews, you know, right down to, you know, how many file cabinets and how many workstations and, you know, special equipments, whether it's a security provision or an HVAC provision. All of that gets written down, and that's what we use to actually generate our square footage. If I have an office and it says I have a workstation and two visitors' chairs and three file cabinets, I actually sketch out a layout, and then I say, okay, this is the square footage program that we're going to use. So that feeds into this document, the space needs. There's another document in this package. It's called our site needs assessment. I don't have it up here on the screen, but we certainly would actually share some of that progress already. But the site needs assessment says, okay, based on a program, a building of nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, I also, in my discussions, talked about how many parking spaces do we need? You know, what happens if there's a meeting on site? Do we need additional parking spaces for that? Do we need room for generators? Do we need room for antenna towers? Do we need room for dumpsters? All of those other components, they go into what we call the site needs assessment. Basically, what that does is gives us an estimation of how much site area we need to support any of these programs. So then when we start looking at sites, we can say, well, you know, the program says we need one point three acres, and that site is three quarters of an acre. You know, you've already got a question mark. The other big important thing is that it is buildable area because sites that have wetlands or very steep topography or right-of-ways, that can take away from the usable area of the site. So we're really looking at, you know, what is the usable area of the site? So anyway, that's guidance in helping us to look at what sites might support the need. So after the programming exercise with the police department, we arrived at a total of nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet. For those of you that have the copies there inside that blue box, you'll see there's a net area, and then there's a net-to-gross adjustment. Basically, the net area is if I take the room sizes, so from the inside a wall to the inside a wall, and I add those up. You know, this room is, I don't know, seven hundred square feet. So seven hundred square feet plus that one, which might be seven hundred square feet, and then I get a total net area. Well, the net area is not the building area because it doesn't account for the thickness of walls or that hallway out there or some of the other spaces. So the net-to-gross adjustment essentially is an adjustment that you apply to make up that difference so that we know what the full building area is. And because building cost has a lot to do with building area. In fact, it's your most effective tool in managing cost. If you can bring your square footage down, you can bring your costs down. In residential construction, everybody always talks about granite countertops and porcelain tile and, you know, all of those great finishes. In this kind of building, the value of your finishes is less important than the total of your square footers. That's the biggest impact. So if you want to shrink costs, you've got to shrink square footage. Yes, sir.
So does the parking area factor into this nine thousand?
No, sir. This is building, this one here. That's site needs assessment, which you had in the package, I think Jim shared with you previously. That actually does have that room detail with the parking.
So this is without a parking lot?
Yeah. And of course, that nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, it could be one-story. And in fact, I think this one is set up for one-story. If you do two-story, then you've got to think about elevators and stairs and all of that good stuff as well.
Cheaper if you do one-story, right?
That nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, there's no way I'd do a two-story building for a public building. It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
It's too small to do that.
Yeah. When you get into bigger buildings, then you start thinking about whether or not it's worth the cost for the stairs and the elevators, you know, to offset your site need. So anyway, that is a description of how we get to that. That's the program area for the police department. If we skip ahead, we'll see that we went through a similar exercise. And again, my consultant, H two M, Katrina Pacheco, came out and did this program, and we came up with an area of sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy square feet for a fire department. I will tell you that according to Fire House Magazine, this goes back a couple of years, but the average size of fire stations in the United States is about eighteen thousand square feet. Don't get too hung up on that because we're kind of unique in New England. We have more volunteer stations, more volunteer departments in some areas of the country. When you have paid departments, I do a lot, did a lot of work down in Virginia, for instance, and they have, you know, many, many fire stations that have fewer trucks, and their fire stations can be twelve thousand or ten thousand square feet. In New England, where you have lots of volunteer agencies, we see big fire stations often. So I think the important thing is, yes, you're slightly under the average in the United States, probably well under the average for a fire, single fire headquarters in New England because of volunteer. So moving forward, space needs for town offices. That came to about fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. We did, by the way, in all of these, we spent a lot of time talking with the chiefs of the departments and some of their staff, certainly with Jim, and walking through tours of the town offices and getting, you know, not only firsthand information from the accounts, but then also looking at our photographs from our tours and saying, wait a minute. He said five file cabinets, but I'm counting six or seven in this room in my photos. So we take that into consideration as well. And then we look at opportunities. You know, are there ways of using space differently so that maybe we can save a little bit of square footage? We did a little bit of that with the fire department, using some common office area for a series of workstations rather than private offices because that just saves square footage. It's, you know, everybody hates the cubicle thing, but at the end of the day, if you're not sitting forty people in a room, if you've got a few people in there at a time, that's a big square footage saver. So town office program, this came to fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. I'm sorry, I didn't write down what the square footage of this building is, but it's substantially larger.
What this building is?
Yeah.
Than that?
Than that, yeah.
Really?
I believe so, yeah.
Wow.
The hallways contribute a lot to that. You've got a lot of circulation. You've got a big gym downstairs.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not reprogramming a new gym for the town offices, sorry.
The fire department is there.
Yeah, a small gym.
It's assigned in the town offices. I have to get assigned.
If we move forward, we'll see the combined public safety... There you go. I just happened to throw up here the space needs for the, if you add them together. What we did is we talked to the departments and said, what can you share? Obviously, mechanical spaces, that's the key. And, you know, a lot of times when you have a big dispatch center that both police and fire use, that's a great opportunity since you have, you've got a backup dispatch in the police department. That wasn't a great opportunity in this department. But kitchens, the departments are willing to share the kitchen dining room. That's huge. I can't tell you how many public safety buildings, you know. There's a wall here, and there's police spaces, and there's fire spaces, and the only thing they share is the dispatch center and the training room. You've got some decent sharing going on, even sharing resources in terms of administrative staff. So we got some pretty good savings. So if you look there, it's twenty-five thousand four hundred square feet for the combined. If we had added those two previous programs together, it comes out to twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-five square feet. So you're going to end up saving almost, no, eleven hundred and forty-five square feet of area that you're saving by combining. At the cost of square footage today in the public construction market, that's not a small dollar amount. That's a big sum. So I think the last one here is the, there we go, the public safety and town offices. If we did these as a combined facility, we ended up with about forty thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet. One thing that I did suggest, if we do consider a combined single building, I would do a few things a little bit differently there. I would do the public safety building with a connector to the town offices, and the reason is the building code. Public safety buildings, fire stations and police stations are emergency services specifically. They have to be the most resilient buildings right up there with hospitals according to the building code. And so the risk level is much higher, which means the structural systems are much stiffer than a town office structure would need to be. And so you actually spend more money on public safety buildings because of that requirement in the building code than you would on town offices. If we made them all a single building, then you would have to make the whole building meet that standard. By keeping them, by connected but not the same building, you could save a lot of money on the town office piece. So anyway, we'd be looking at forty thousand. I did not do that sum there, but we could probably pull that up real quick if somebody actually wants to add the three previous ones together, and you'd see that we're saving some more square footage with that. So that's the programming exercise. Again, one of the select board members wanted to talk a little bit about that. I'd love to set up a phone call or a meeting to go through some of the detail of that programming information. I think that's all healthy. So I offer that opportunity and would enjoy talking to you.
I mentioned that you may have some questions for the program.
He's an architect. Oh, okay. Well, there you go. That'd be a good conversation. So anyway, yes, again, it's living documents. I think there's lots of discussion that we can have around that. Moving on. So there's a number of town-owned properties that we took a look at. And in this map, it's a little hard to see, but I'll help you out there because we have A, B, C, and D on the map there. A and B are, is the parcel between the cemetery and the DPW site. C is actually the DPW site, and D is a stretch of town-owned properties up on sixty-seven there. It looked really pretty on the map when we looked at it. When we drove out to look at it, it looked a lot less pretty. I'll show you why in a little bit here. But these are the town-owned properties that we took a look at. So if you zoom back out and then move on to that first site test fit. So when I first started the study here, after the meeting, I drove out and I went into the cemetery and drove through those winding roads up in there. And I got to a point somewhere back on the far right of this site plan, and I got out of the car and I walked onto the site, and I said, well, this doesn't look so bad. It's, you know, it's a little hilly, but not bad at all. There's lots of trees, obviously. There's a pond back further off. I said, this looks good. Then I got the GIS mapping. The GIS mapping, and I looked at the contours, and I said, wait a minute. There's something different going on here. And what I had not realized is that when you stand right here on Brimfield Road and look up at the site, you see a hill going up. And what happens is it goes up, and then it eases up a little bit, and then keeps going up. There is a lot of topography, topographic change from the northern yellow line to the southern yellow line. So this was my very first effort to do, to get a public safety building on this site. And the idea was, okay, there's so much grade. I'm just not going to be able to do drive-through bays, something that the fire department was really looking for. I'm going to have to bury the back of the bays into the hill. And then what I'll do is I'll have the bays on the front, and then I'll wrap around and have the entrance to the police department, the shared public entry up above. So I'll get the parking lot up there, and then the police station will sit basically on top of the fire station, if you will, with a little variation there. So you can see from my new public safety facility, if you go up over to the left, you'll see a wide piece of asphalt. That's our apparatus apron. That's where the trucks exit the building. Got to get the trucks all the way out before they start negotiating turns. Otherwise, the back end of the truck has a nasty habit of hitting the building, which we like to avoid. In this case, I had picked an elevation for the building where I was up the hill a little bit, thinking that that would help me. And what it did for me is create a very unfortunate response route. And I'll walk over here again just to illustrate it for the folks that are here. I don't know if you can see me at home, but you come out of the building on the apron, and then you turn and you head up the road so that I can keep the slope on that driveway as minimal as possible and meet the road as Brimfield Road climbs. That is not a great egress situation for a fire apparatus. And then the turn back to Brimfield Road for a ladder truck or a large engine would be very challenging. And then, of course, you know, you can see that I have moved some contours around pretty dramatically. I get almost, you know, removal of earth of over twenty feet in some places. So that's a significant amount. Now, I understand that there's a lot of sand around here, so there may be some value in that material. But still, what I found is it's creating for me a lot of retaining walls, which are expensive. We see those in commercial construction sometimes. I don't know how they do that. But in public construction, we don't like to do a lot of retaining walls because they're expensive. But you can see there's a list of some of the observations on the side. You know, it's got, the building has great visibility from Brimfield Road. You know, there is some space on the back where we could do a similar thing. If we buried a floor or two of town offices into the hill, then maybe we could have, you know, a couple, three-story building there. And then, again, a lot of topography. The further back on the site you push it, the less topography you'd have to deal with. To me, it's a weird place for town hall up behind the public safety building, buried out of sight. But I just wanted to say, yes, it is possible here. And then, of course, you know, there's a number of negatives. The big ones are the fact that you can't have drive-through bays, that the apparatus response route isn't very good, and you've got a lot of retaining wall work and an awful lot of earthwork that needs to go on in that site. And then one other thing is there's only one way on and off the site. According to every public safety, you know, recommendation guideline out there, the IACP International Association Chiefs of Police has a guideline. The Fire NFPA has standards on it. You always like to have more than one way off a site because if there's an accident or traffic congestion, you want to have a second way out. This scheme only has one way out. So those are all negatives on this site. So moving forward, I didn't give up on it right away. So I'm stubborn, I guess. I did want to take one more shot at it. And in this case, what I did is said, the heck with that crazy driveway. I want to try at least solve that. And I also wanted to try to address some of the chief's concerns about not having drive-through bays. So what I did is I added a couple more bays to the front of the building so that he could have more front-lying vehicles and then maybe shorten the depth of some of those bays so that I make up for that square footage by, you know, not just adding long, deep, empty bays, but by putting out a program in there. And I said, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start at Brimfield Road, and I'm going to put my apron right there, right at Brimfield Road, so I can get my trucks out and make the turn onto the road. That's the ideal situation for egress from a fire station. And then I'm going to see what happens. And so what happened is, yeah, I get the bays right near the road, about fifty-five, sixty feet off the edge of the road, which is plenty of room to make that turn. And then I get my bays sit about, you know, I need eighteen feet to the underside of my structure so that you can tip a cab inside the bays. So I end up with about twenty, twenty-two feet to the top of the bay structure. And I piled twenty feet of dirt on the backside of this so that I can have an entry, a great entry from in back above into my police portions up above. In this case, I was able to reduce some of my extensive cut and fill. I was able to reduce some scat. I was able to reduce substantially the amount of retaining wall that I needed. So, yeah, I actually got segregated police parking so that the cruisers and staff parking could be segregated from the rest of the cruisers. That's, that's an important thing, because there's lots of reasons. People get angry with police departments sometimes, I'm sorry. And that they, they, they can cause mischief with vehicles, so we, whenever possible, we like to get at least some sort of fence enclosure around there. Um, so it had some, some definite pros. It still offers the opportunity of doing something further back on the site, um, for town offices. But, once again, even with, even with the increased, uh, number of bays, there's still the big concern is, okay, how do I bring a truck back? I talked a lot about how do I get a truck out? What do I do when I bring a truck out? And as, as the chief pointed out, probably you're gonna move up, go up Brimfield Road and back it in. And that means you're gonna be doing that maneuver in the roadway. And, uh, I'm told there's some pretty, you know, fast-moving traffic that goes through there. So there are a number of concerns from that. There's a number of concerns of being stuck with, without the flexibility of drive-through bays. And, uh, you can see I actually, my driveway actually spills over onto the adjoining property, which happens to be the DPW property. We may have to combine the sites to do that. That allowed me to spread out my grade a little bit more so that my driveway, uh, was, I think, five to six percent climbing up, up to that parking lot and back. But all in all, um, from the fire department's standpoint, this, this wasn't really deemed a, a great solution because of the compromises necessary. So then we went look, yes, sir?
Okay, so I'm dying for a side view here, but basically this one and the previous one is the fire department and then the police. Two-story.
That's correct.
And the back of the fire department is under ground.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then, so the, right, okay, so the police are here, so then the parking is on the second floor.
Yeah, what's up above, well, oh, so you drive up to that line.
Okay, so this, um, driveway here goes up the hill essentially.
Yep, yep.
All right, and this would go, this is above the police?
That's to the Sally Port, Sally Port for the police.
So that's on the second floor.
Yes, that's correct. It would be over the support spaces on the back of the bays.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I can answer your question. One second.
Um, yeah, I think so, yeah. Yep, okay.
Go ahead, sir.
So you mentioned traffic backing in.
Just gotta identify who you are.
Dean Wasnuski, I'm on, um, uh, town offices in Westbrookville. Question about, uh, egress, um, when they're coming back. Do they, uh, can you have a traffic signal? Is that cost-effective in that situation out on the Brimfield Road?
Is that a statement? Yes, I believe that is, yeah. We would have to work with the DOT to do that. It is a possibility. There was a time when the DOT was, you know, if, if it's an actual traffic light that, that goes red, yellow, green frequently, they, they like those better than ones that only happen periodically, because what they have found through research is if you have a light that only goes red when fire is responding, fire department's responding, people forget it's there and drive through there. But yes, we could work with the DOT and, and explore a lighting situation. There's a cost to that, but it's.
Brimfield is that, if this were sixty-seven, you definitely need something, but this may be not so bad.
Yeah.
In terms of traffic, right?
I mean.
You got the curb there, too, that would make it harder.
There's a, there's a really tough curb around that corner where Reed Street is, and, and it comes up really quick. And I just, my fear with this one is having a nose of an apparatus edged out in the road, trying to back up and have someone coming around. There's construction, there's multiple.
Till the break here.
Sand pits on that road already that are constantly trucking material in and out. Uh, there's multiple, uh, Samick, as well as Fountains pit is on there, and there is constantly construction vehicles up and down that road. So there is a little bit of a safety concern if the truck was trying to, was out in the road trying to back in in this scenario.
Okay, you're also increasing your speed. You're coming from a thirty mile an hour zone to a forty where everyone's usually driving around fifty, fifty-two mile an hour, not at a cost of coming off of Reed Street.
Now, you could.
Just, you guys missed it, but whenever you're gonna speak, please identify who you are, and then what your position is with the town, or if you're a resident or employee, whatever. That's a requirement for using Zoom and, uh, add out.
Attable boy fire chief, my apologies.
Thank you.
Brad Merkel, Warren, uh, police officer, Westbrookville Town Selectman.
We just wanna make sure we check that box so we don't get in trouble, so.
Now, I will point out, if you push the building further back and keep that low-slope apron, then you could possibly create more turnaround room, but it's gonna come at more excavation, uh, more site work further back on the site. So, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mischaracterize anything as impossible when it isn't. It just becomes a cost game.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so the next site that we looked at, after we brainstormed, we said, okay, what other sites could we look at? Um, we walked over to the DPW, uh, site and looked at this parcel, um, that is just south of the DPW. There's a little bit of topography there. I will say my GIS topography did not match my observations on the site, so I think some site work, some changes have happened since that last GIS model. That's not uncommon, I see it all the time.
Is it flat or no?
Uh, there's, there's an area of the site that has a, a nice flat spot, sitting right about here. Um, there is what appears to be, I think it might be a created wetland.
It is.
And then, then, of course, up in here, um, the DPW is, has a lot of, uh, stockpile of materials. So in this site test fit, I'm going right up to the edge of that neighboring property. I guess we're gonna do some, some sand excavation over there. Uh, I get right up against it. Um, I, I used an L-shaped plan. I did do a two-story on the part that says public safety with, with some fire spaces, program spaces up above, police down below. But the apparatus bay is one story. That's huge. Not putting stuff on top of the apparatus bay saves a lot of money. You know, you gotta pay for the roof. You don't have to pay for the big, long structure to hold, uh, to hold up other program. Uh, so that's an advantage. Uh, I did fall short of the programmatic need for, um, total parking on this particular diagram. However, there's a few notes that I made that, that could bring this, make this stronger. Number one is, uh, I, I, we need to talk to Conservation Commission about, about the wetland situation. It, it does appear to me during the DPW work that there was some, uh, some, some pretty significant work in the wetland to the rear of the salt shed. It looks like there's some, um, some water retention solutions back in there that were built at that time. I need to understand exactly whether this wetland can be, uh, filled in or replicated, or if we could do any. That's that little one that I circled down the roadway. Yep, along the edge of my bigger parking lot, there is a bank, and it drops down into what may also be deemed as a wetland. So I think there's a little bit more work from the Conservation Commission's standpoint on this one. Um, what I also asked, is there any way we could look at the property going north and maybe do a little bit of site work up there to create another level area so that the DPW could move their stockpile from the location between up to the back, and that's that hatched area up there? And then maybe we could use their area, satisfy our parking need, and maybe pull off the edges a little bit more. So I think there's still some interesting opportunities, but it needs to start with, uh, with, number one was a conversation with the DPW folk, and number two is a conversation with the Conservation Commission. And I believe Mr. Ferrara has started that conversation with DPW.
With DPW?
Yeah, so, um, so it's, it's got some, it's got some hope in there, um, but it's got some challenges that we need to overcome. Uh, and you can see a good roadway, um, visibility, um, although I, we did talk a little bit about, as you come out of the apparatus apron and look south, um, there is a little bit of curve in the road. So I'm thinking about making sure that we can get a good sightline down that way would be important on this site.
Just some tree clearing?
Probably, yeah. So that's something I need to get, yeah, right in that little triangle where I put the park, the little parking lot. Uh, that would be our call firefighters coming in that lot. Um, and, you know, it's got great response onto Brimfield Road. Um, it does still have the backup situation, um, onto, into the apron. However, it is a drive-through, so you don't, you could, if you empty the rear bay, come around back and drive through. So you don't have to return trucks from the Brimfield Road. So big plus on this one from the previous two, it does have the drive-through bay situation.
And the bay is one story and the rest of it's two.
Yep, yep.
Just like here with the gym. There's no offices on top of the gym.
All right, the next one, this is the one that I loved when we looked at the maps. I saw all these connected properties and it looked pretty good. And then we drove out there. And, uh, you, you think we came all the way up here when we drove out there and parked over here and walked across, and I looked down in the hole. And said, well, I'm not excited anymore. Um, however, I did wanna do a test fit, just so that we, you know, we can prove it, we looked at it. Uh, the, the apparatus bays on the back, uh, which we're building on top of, uh, are about forty feet below the road. The front door, which I had said was gonna be here, is almost twenty feet below the road. All doable, uh, there's a lot of water on the site, you know, there's the, the big, um, uh, wet area behind. Right after you leave the road.
Right, huh? The river is right behind it?
Yeah, right after you leave the road, there is some, some soil down there that might be classified. I, I think it's further back, but the GIS said that it's not, but it's on their knowledge at this point. Uh, I think the real, the real game here is there's so much topography, trying to make up for that big hole in the ground. Um, if you look really close, you can see some notes there on the two driveways coming from the apparatus bays, that I am way over the maximum grade, um, for a fire apparatus egressing, um, the bays to get up to the road. So it will have a dramatic effect on response time. Uh, the vehicles, you know, coming from a, a stop in the bays to climb the hill are gonna, gonna crawl up that hill.
God forbid we have an ice storm.
Yeah, and it's uphill, which is even worse.
So this is fourteen percent gray?
Yeah.
Wow, and that's twelve, eleven, twelve?
Yeah. Yeah, I called up, uh, and it's eleven, twelve because the road does, it's lower down on the left side of the sheet than it is on the right side. You can see there's a, this is a ten-foot contour right here. So, you know, we're probably, uh, easily ten feet lower. Um, I had, I called up David Pachico over at H2M. I said, David, give me some info, man. What is the maximum slope you would put on an apparatus response route? Eight percent would be the maximum slope. So fourteen and eleven are both over that.
So this site's not even doing.
Without a lot of fill material, that would be very expensive. I don't think this is a viable, viable candidate.
Put it over here. Put it over here.
Yeah, dig, dig the hill down over there and dump it there.
Ship it over here. Kind of like what they do with back bay in Boston, right? Way back when, move all that dirt.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen projects that move a lot of dirt, but there's always money in moving a lot of dirt. And by the way, there are some pretty expensive retaining walls, because there's one that runs the full length of this parking lot in front. And then there's one from the building that runs, um, out both ways. Because basically, I'm coming down the hill, see if I can show everybody, coming down the hill from the road, got a parking lot, and I'm in the front door of the police, the public safety complex, which extends out over the apparatus bays. And then the apparatus bays sit down twenty feet lower from that. So they drop down twenty, they drop down another twenty. So there's, there's a lot of topography going on. I don't think it's.
My question is, is that also in the flood zone?
I didn't see the designation on the GIS. I was a little bit surprised by that. We would have to get the FEMA maps and dig into that a little further.
Cause I'd be very worried about anything being done there.
It, it doesn't feel good to me. And I, I'm not that much higher than a wetland area that is marked over the waterway area. Uh, that, that existing contour, I tried to push myself up a few feet from it, but.
Just share again, cause I didn't share the whole screen. So where is this site on sixty-seven?
Actually, George, by Washington.
Yes.
Where?
By Washington.
Go, look where Washington ends up, a little bit to the right.
Oh, sorry, I'm with West Warren.
So follow Washington.
Oh, George is higher.
George is higher, not to the city.
Yeah, it's, it's right in here.
Warren Truck and Auto.
Yeah, to the left of Warren Truck and Auto.
So this way.
Right where that water is.
So like this area. Oh, that's that conservation land, right?
Yeah.
So it's not there, it's to the right. The site is to the right.
This way.
Yeah, after, uh, what in front?
No, it's before it.
Before?
Yeah, it's before it.
Then it's off.
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, it is not a good site for a public safety building. I mean, the, the, the game changer when you think about topography on these buildings, you know, you can do lots of buildings on hills and, you know, complicated arrangements, but it's the trucks that matter. We like to get police cruisers out as well, but the trucks are the fussy ones.
Well, they got a name, yeah, um, was it Humvee?
Yeah, you can get them right now.
Good job, but there's a truck out there.
Yeah.
It's a good thing that we look at all the sites and do a, do a back so they can check them off on the list and say, somebody's gonna come. Do you see all the options?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, right. I can't tell you how many times I've been in front of a town meeting, because, did you look at this site? So, yeah, every, every site you show me, we're gonna do a test fit, uh, because, why do you answer the question? Yeah, okay. All right, um, so there's mostly negatives there. It does have drive-through bays, that, that's a positive.
The design seems impressive.
Yeah.
I, it, yeah, it's efficient.
What, when, we also think about what is the impact of site development costs, and of course, retaining loss is a big part of it. But you also notice, if you look at the amount of roadway on this site compared to the amount of roadway on the DPW site, there's a lot more asphalt, because I gotta spread out to get up the hills.
Which means more plowing or?
More plowing, you know, it's more, more asphalt.
Start water runoff and stuff.
And more cost issue. So, we can move forward again.
Too bad it's not flat.
Yeah, but we're flat and beautiful. Um, there are some other sites, um, that are not town-owned property. We cannot look at those right now because, um, that could affect decisions later on, but. I just wanted to make a few points. Um, you know, I, I noted how many positive and negative, uh, comments there were, but I wanted to start off with not all observations are deemed equal. That, you know, a drive-through, not having drive-through bays is a bigger deal, um, than some of the other criteria. And so, um, I think ultimately, we need to create a little sort of a, a checklist of the highest priorities and then grade these sites a little bit differently. But I, I don't imagine that we're gonna find dramatically different results than, than what I've seen already. We're, of the ones, the four that we looked at, the four options we looked at here, uh, the DPW site, even though it's under the Conservation Commission and working with the DPW, does seem, uh, to be the one that, that has the greatest opportunity, um, given all the criteria of these four. Again, it's not to say it's impossible on A or B. It's highly improbable indeed. But C, uh, looks like it, it's, it's got the least challenges, assuming we can come to terms with the Conservation Commission challenges. Yes, sir?
Uh, Brad Merkel, Town Selectman, Westbrookville. So were all these sites picked just because of town property, or are we, we looking at response times for residents in Warren?
Uh, we did talk about response time with each of the sites that we looked at. There has not been any mapping done at this point, um, but, you know, we absolutely, we talked about a lot of sites that do deserve response time consideration, so, uh, or also failed on other criteria. Okay, um, so anyway, yeah, the, you know, right now the summation is of these town-owned sites that we looked at, DPW looks like the most advantageous at this point. Again, everything's a living document, there's still plenty of opportunities to come up with new information and explore other possibilities. Uh, moving on a little bit, uh, this is the one other thing that we did start doing. This is actually public information, because that's how we got it. Uh, we, we just got your assessed values of the various properties that the fire, the police, and the town offices have currently. That doesn't mean that that's actually their, their value on the, the market, um, but at least we know what the assessed values of those properties are. So if you, if you were to do a public safety building and, you know, sell those properties, then this is the first glimpse in what you might get out of that. And I think, you know, not, just like not all criteria is equal, not, not all properties are equal, some of them, um, you know, may be viewed as having a, a better future, uh, or an easier future. If I were a developer. If I were a developer, you know, looking at some of these sites, I'm gonna ask myself, you know, what do I think I can use this building for? If I'm interested in, you know, vehicle garages, maybe the firehouse makes a lot of sense. If I'm looking for apartments, maybe the old town hall police department makes some sense. You know, I've seen old schools turned into office space and housing space. So, you know, it depends on, you know, where the market is and what the developers feel. Or maybe they just want a piece of property and wanna knock something down. But that's the first look at, you know, what those values of those assets are. So with that, I think my next slide says, answer any additional questions.
Does anybody have any questions about what's going on? This is the very initial stage of doing a project like this. We're trying to gather the information, identify a location for the facility, what our requirements are for the facility. So each department was interviewed, said they needed this much space for each, each police officer, each firefighter, bays, everything else. So that's what brought us to these calculations. As everybody knows, our buildings are aging. They're becoming very costly to do, and they're outdated. Fire trucks aren't gonna be able to fit into the bays for the old fire department because my understanding is you would have the special order trucks.
We currently special order trucks. The engine one that we're replacing right now that we just got funding for at the last town meeting has to be a custom-built truck. Because no other truck will fit in Station B in West Warren. So this would be the attempt to combine both stations and have an forum at both stations. And having, you know, obviously Jeff has talked about the drive-through bays. Drive-through bays are advantageous because you can incorporate the same amount of apparatus in less bays. Okay, they could be stacked back-to-back, they could be backed in, you know, and respond from both sides. There's more avenues there. If you go with non-drive-through bays, you have to build more bays to fit all the equipment we have at both stations. So that is the reasoning that we're trying to get drive-through bays because it honestly makes more sense.
And one of the other big things in fire departments, I did my first fire station thirty-five years ago or so now. Interestingly enough, Matt Salady's one of my project architects, works for me on my projects. The station that I designed thirty-five years ago was dedicated to his grandfather. He was the chief of the fire department. Apparently, he was at the dedication ceremony where, you know, I was all celebrating the completion of the building and he was crawling on the floor. Now he works for me. But when I did that station, there's a lot of things that have changed in the way that you approach fire station design since those days. And the biggest thing is that there's an incredible awareness of the rate of cancer in firefighters that comes from all of the contaminants that are involved in fires. It doesn't matter if it's a vehicle fire or a structured fire, but there's also risks even doing medical situations. And so creating some separation from where you store the equipment that's been exposed and the places where you live and work, the offices, dormitories if you have them, is really important in fire station design these days. And then making sure that you have the ability to decontaminate, make things clean again. That's been a big change in the fire service.
Yes, Chief. Again, I'm a void fire chief, I think, Mr. Chairman. Just, I just want to reiterate something that Jeff said at the very beginning. I just want to make it very clear to the people in the audience here and as well, possibly on Zoom as well. You know, we did have, these talks have been extensive. They've been, we've had meeting after meeting about these things. This is not something that's been taken lightly. And I think it should be noted again that, you know, police-fire-highway, you know, the town departments in this town work very well together. And that's a huge advantage in a project like this. As I said, I've seen many departments where everything's separate. Two kitchens, two this, two that. I mean, we don't, we're not asking for that. That's not, that's not something that we're looking for. You know, there's no pickleball courts. There's no, you know, massive, you know, movie screens. None of that stuff is part of this project. This is a bare bones, build it out for fifty years to make sure we can have room to move as things change. But it is combined. It is, we're working together every day, sharing those spaces and minimizing that square footage as absolutely as much as possible.
And that's very important. We're building for the growth of the town because right now, we've outgrown the facilities now, they're outdated. They're not designed to be what they're being used for. The police station is not a police station. It's an old municipal building that the police were dumped into. They're doing their best, but it is not a police station. Fire departments, okay, they're much smaller than what they need. They don't have the requirements. They don't have the special areas for storing the equipment, decon and air equipment. They don't have those things that are required to be in these buildings now. So we're very much out of date. But we also want to be able to not just build for what we need today because in ten years, we outgrow the building and have to do it again. We want to be able to build it. So in fifteen, twenty years, we're still good with the growth. We can still handle it because the building can handle the growth of the town. The last thing we want to do is just build something just to throw it out and throw these guys in it. They have to be able to grow in these buildings. So that's what we're really looking at.
Yeah, so on your study scope, when I saw it, I guess I wanted a number of ten that would say, how do we pay for this? So, you know, are there grant sources? Are there other ways to, you know, obviously, we can raise taxes, but are there other ways to pay for this? And are you gonna look at that?
Yeah, we've been watching grants now. I've been watching grants in Massachusetts in particular for, you know, thirty-something years. There is a movement right now to try to get some fire station money available. There is, has been a movement in Massachusetts to sort of do something like the MSBA for schools for public safety. Neither one of those is at a place where it's been affected immediately. There are grants available for certain specific items. There's been a grant available for the climate system, the vehicle exhaust extraction system. That one is generally available out there. Sometimes there are grants for the training equipment. We have, unfortunately, unlike schools, been faced with very few brick-and-mortar grants. We thought we might get some, you know, out of the Recovery Act. Years ago, I had projects that were shovel-ready and made any money either. So, yes, we are always looking for the opportunities. You know, one of the ones that we have tapped into recently is FEMA does have some grant availability for emergency operations centers. So, you know, you could, you know, if we deem that the training room and the combined public safety is an EOC, then we might be able to get some money out of them for that. Just had a community get almost a million dollars for that.
Oh, we could do that.
So.
Just put EOC on that training room.
You know, it varies. You know, they make their decisions the way FEMA makes their decisions, but people have nothing.
Well, and what they, what is it, the new Rural Affairs?
Mm-hmm.
Department is headed by Ann Goby. Ann Goby used to be our senator.
Yeah, she's been pushing for getting money to fund public safety complexes. We've talked to her a few times about it. And we've also had some representatives go to Boston and represent the town for potential grant money like you were talking about. But it's very competitive. And unless you're shovel-ready when these things kick off, you're probably not gonna get into the first parts of it. So if you have your project ready to develop, ready to go, these monies, this money comes available, you drop your package on them, and hopefully you get considered.
Yeah, I would encourage you to keep those conversations with your representatives going because I have seen, I haven't seen bricks and mortar yet, but I did see one community get a grant for doing environmental investigation and boardings on a site. You know, it's sixty thousand dollars, but that's sixty thousand dollars to the good. And the reason they got the money is that they just kept talking, kept asking. So I would encourage that.
We have no problem with doing that. Mr. Conrad?
Joe Conrad, Border Health. Just so people know, where the town highway bond is, is almost the exact center of the town. So it's two and a half miles either way and three miles north or south. Really, with the fire department, with the amount of time that they have to go onto the pike for rescues, it puts them closer.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Eric Stevens, Town Resident here. I know this is just beginning stage. Nothing's super close, but I just wondered if there was any kind of projected dates or schedules or anything like looking at, or is it just like?
No.
Not even close?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. This is, again, this is, this is, this study was done because we received grant money to do it.
Okay.
So it didn't cost the residents any money. And we've been trying to apply grant money and get grant money to do a lot of this work. This morning, we did a master plan for the Wright's Mill Complex. That was grant money. But that also, after you do that study, it opens up an avenue to get other federal funding. Because if you don't do the initial steps, the investigative part, when some of these real competitive grants come up, they won't even look at you. You know, because they're gonna wanna know, if you get like funding from, what is it, USDA?
Right.
First of all, they're gonna wanna know, is there a historical site there? Are there any Indian burial graves there? And is there any hazardous materials that ever been there? Okay, is it a brown zone? Okay, so you can answer that. And if you tell them, well, I don't know, next time. So you have to do the research, get the studies in, do your homework, and do things like this to be able to get that money. Getting the money part's the tricky thing because our town is a very poor town. Majority of the residents are, live below the poverty level. And we have to keep that in consideration because we can't raise the taxes, say, we can't turn around and say, okay, we need to fund a three-hundred-million-dollar public safety complex on what the town residents are paying for taxes. You just, it's not gonna happen, ever. Okay? So we have to apply the funds that we have available or that we can potentially get to do something like this and live in reality. What are the needs of our town? And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do all the homework. Hopefully, some grant opportunities come ahead that we can take advantage of. Mr. Farrar is very creative and the rest of the town offices are very creative in getting some of these grants. We've received a lot of grant money over the past few years. And this is how we're getting done so much that we've gotten done. So we're trying in baby steps, but we're moving forward. A year ago, we didn't have this. In three years, we will probably be much more further. I'd like to see this completed within the next five years. But again, things change. It's availability of getting the money, the studies, designs, architectural, because you're gonna do a concept design, then we have to pay to actually design that building. And what materials are gonna be needed, where are you gonna put what studs? You work construction, so you're very well aware of that. That gets costly when you actually have to do the architectural designs. So we're just beginning phase.
Well, and ultimately, at town meeting, this has gotta be approved. So we could do all this work and bring it to an annual meeting one time, and the town says, nope, don't wanna deal with it. And then, oh, you know, so it's, there's a lot of steps.
Oh, I know. I'm just trying, you know, picking the brain and seeing, you know, what they're projecting. Like, oh, you know, this, we're looking at this and we'd like to, you know, like you said, five years would be nice.
Yeah, it would be nice in.
I think that's always kind of been in our mind, about five years.
Yeah, and that's what we've tried to go for, but there could be a lot of things. We could pick a site and, oh, guess what? There's a historical value to that site. There's significant artifacts that are being located there, and that shuts down our project.
So only one time have I had artifacts. One time I had frogs.
I was gonna say, yeah, natural resources too, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the thing.
More than once I've had environmental conditions.
Wetlands, we might have to replicate. Over at the highway site, there's one, what is it, seat? That's a good design. It's promising. But we have to replicate wetlands. And knowing conservation, they may work with us, but we're gonna have to replicate.
Yeah.
And where are we gonna replicate that now? So right now, we're doing all the brainstorming and seeing if we can even do this. We want to, and we're hoping to, and we're gonna fight our hardest to get it done. But very early stages.
You know, I just seen a post about it and I just was like, oh, I hadn't heard nothing about it, so I wanted to come, you know.
No, glad to have you because I know you have extensive background in construction. And if you have any ideas or anything like that, it'd be great to hear from you too. We take all feedback, and this is the time to do it.
Yeah, this is a great time because, you know, right now, changing anything in the program, changing anything on the test fit is, you know, a few minutes of work. Sometime later, there's money involved in changes. So this is a great time to have open dialogue and to get everybody understanding where we're going, what we're thinking, what we're doing. And, you know, get a chance to say, really, is that past the stiff test?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've built safety complexes in other towns, so it's, you know, one came to my town, I'd be wanting to work there.
So you're the perfect guy to have around for it too, so we can pick your mind on these types of subjects too. And for those residents that are getting worried, like, oh my God, they're putting a public safety complex in tomorrow. That is not happening. Now, it's the planning stage. We're trying to see if we can even do this and where we would do it. So. Anybody else? Mr. Conrad?
Well, having been on the Historical Commission for four years, I don't believe there's anything on the Highway Department site. It's the other side of the road that it might be, but not on the Highway Department side.
That's good news, but you never know. Hopefully, there's nothing there. Anybody else have any questions?
Rakeback, Uptown Resident. It was glossed over about the possibility of looking at private property to get a buildable lot. And, but if now is the time to consider all the options before you go too far and commit to a build-out with Plan C, I think it was.
So we're gonna be discussing that, but we can't talk about that because it's gonna require land acquisition. And we can't really discuss that in an open meeting right now.
Okay.
You tip your hand if you.
Change the value of the land.
Yeah, you change the value.
So somebody might turn around and say, okay, my property value is worth twenty thousand dollars. We say we're gonna put a public safety complex on it. Now it's three hundred thousand dollars.
So to clarify my question, I'm not looking to identify a property, but is that, has that been looked at so far?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a number of things we're gonna discuss. And that'll be due in exactly a second.
And those are very promising, I think, too. But not releasing too much. But yes, we're looking at that also.
Okay, that's different than, no, we can't look at that. We can't even talk about it. We can't consider it. It is being considered. You just can't talk about it publicly. I understand that. But, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're in a unique situation here because, you know, if you had, if you had perfect town-in-sites, why would you consider acquisition?
Right.
But as we looked at today, you've got sites that have challenges. So what needs to come out of this is, okay, what's the cost benefit here? Does, you know, making this site work cost more than acquiring the site? And that's perfectly reasonable question.
Anybody have any other questions? Chiefs, do you have anything to add?
No, like I said, I mean, I, you know, highway, Jeremy, we've had preliminary conversations there. He's been. He's very much on board with doing what he can and to help out and relocating things if necessary. We just have to ask those questions of conservation and stuff. So again, it's, you know, that, that site is workable, as long as things come together the right way and, and some give and take is there to make it work.
Yeah, so that wetland was created for rain wash off.
Yeah, as well, there's a wetland behind the salt shed that's currently, you know, they would have to relocate their little storage areas of sand and, and other things. But, you know, the preliminary conversation we had with them was very promising and that they were more than willing to work with us to do that, so.
And I just, I'll give a, you know, note of praise to folks during the programming exercise. There are lots of times when I'm sitting here listening to, when people ask for things in program, and I, in the back of my head, I'm going, that's never gonna happen. No, you're not getting a pool court basketball court. Not getting a pool, not, not a sauna. It's just not gonna happen.
The fire department can't do swim pools and stuff, they can't do the water.
Scuba diving.
The requests I received were very important. And in fact, the police department has a storage room in there that I wouldn't let it take out. I just, my view in the future is, it's gonna be needed.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the thing, we gotta build this for 20 years, 30 years in the future. It's gonna be useless for us to build it for only what we need now. Because the town is gonna grow, and if we grow out of it, we're just gonna be doing this again, or building additional buildings at more of an expense. So if we do it the first time the right way, then we don't have to redo it in 30 years. So, that's why we're taking that approach. Anybody else have any questions? Chief, did you wanna add anything? You know, you guys, this is your project, you know, this is getting it going for you guys.
We did a lot of work, we cut, the police department cut a lot off it to come down to that, the $9,000.
Engage, and just shut down.
Can you tell the public why you need the building?
I think, yeah, sure. I think we've covered that in meetings over the past...
We've had lots of meetings about this.
Couple of years now, I mean, we tried to move the temporary to West Warren, and that fell through. The building isn't conducive to the police department, we all know that, the town knows that. Tried, they tried to get us to that place in West Warren, and we're in need of a building. This is where we're at, this is the first steps. And as I'm learning, nothing's easy when it comes to municipalities.
You know, it's very special, and that's what, one of the things we learned early on with this too, because we've had a lot of potential sites that we're looking at. And, you know, our, our building commissioner is very good at her job. And she shut down a lot of these sites because they weren't gonna meet public safety requirements. And that kinda, kinda, it was sad for us, because we want these guys to have a good place to work in, and they deserve to have safe environments to work in. And constantly being shut down, step after step. So when people say, why don't you just build a little house? So, like a ranch, why don't you put the police department in a ranch house? I don't know, 'cause it's not a public safety building. There's requirements that have to be met that a little ranch house doesn't do. It is, it just does, it's not, it's great for residential, and it's great for a family to live in, but it's not a public safety building.
Yeah, there's a tremendous amount of standards and guidelines and best practices for the municipality design. For officer's safety as well, as for detainee's safety, which is hugely important, because detainee's safety is liability that the town avoids. And, you know, not to say you can't do a, a, you know, a single-story picture building, there's one over in North Brookfield, like, it's wild, you know? That, that looks at, but, you know, what it looks like from the street is one thing, it meets all of the standards inside, and that's really essential. What you have today is so far out of compliance with most of those standards.
Sir?
Chief, do you wanna explain why we need a fire department?
Oh, sure, you know, I mean, most people have been down to our stations at some point. You know, they're, they're both antiquated, you know, they were built for much different times and different apparatus. You know, we're lucky if we have two inches on this clearance of, of the mirrors nowadays on the, on, on an average fire engine. You know, again, we, we're in the process of starting to build a, replace a tanker in our, our engine one in West Warren that we have to have custom built, which is an added expense just to get it into that station while we're there. You know, they were built for, for different times, they're booked, they're built on slabs, you know, and then, you know, as we mentioned, a lot of what we do now, the, the cancer awareness, the decontamination for hazardous materials and, and, you know, bloodborne pathogens and things like that. I mean, that's, you know, we're doing that all in the workspace, you know what I mean? It's, it's the same place we sit down and, and have lunch and stuff. So, you know, we're making do with what we have, we always will continue to, to do that, but there's no doubt, you know, that we've grown out of our spaces, it's just a, a reality. And quite honestly, building a standalone fire station, building a standalone police station in this day and age is extremely costly, and it's, it's not beneficial. And clearly, you know, the need is, is clearly there for both, both agencies, you know? So, I mean, there's definitely gonna be a cost savings to combine the two, there's no doubt about it. And it's, and it's honestly a better step for the town to take, in my opinion.
So, I'm gonna ask the question, because I know somebody's gonna ask me. If you can't fit your equipment in the building, why don't you just park it outside?
Well, you know, that might not work for a couple of pieces of our apparatus, but people have to understand that they're full of water, they're gonna freeze, they're gonna, you know, I mean, you know, that, yeah, broken fire, I mean, an average fire truck, a new, a new engine today, you know, the last time we purchased an engine was 2011, it was about $450,000 for that piece of equipment. You fast forward to today's prices, a new Class 8 pumper is almost $900,000. So, you know, you have to keep these equipment protected, you have to keep them safe. You, you know, if, if you're, if you're not, you're, you're putting yourself behind the eight ball right off the bat. These are 25-year to 30-year vehicles, if maintenance properly, hopefully, that's the lifespan that you get out of them. But everything's electronic, like, if they, any other vehicle out there, there's, you know, it's a, it's, it's tough to maintain some these days without specialized equipment and everything. So, you know, there's just a lot that goes into it, and, and, you know, the turnout gear and, and keeping that protected, so it's not exposed to UV light from windows and everything, and breaking down the material, that, you know, washing and cleaning, all the, all of those standards have, have changed tremendously, you know? And, and it just, again, we're just, we're, we're out of room. We have to, we have to keep it indoors, we have to make sure that there's enough room. And quite honestly, we're kind of at a transition mode right now, where our call volume is through the roof. It's highest it's ever been, it continues to climb each year. You know, we don't staff around the clock at the moment, like to, to get to, because we truly need it. And we have no sleeping quarters, we have no bunks, we have no beds, we have nothing that's, that's, that's doable for that or the space for it right now. So, you know, if we had to do it in an emergency, we'd do it. But it's, we'd be sleeping in the same quarters that we eat in at the table next, you know? So it's just, the buildings were definitely built for a different time.
So, that's for the fire trucks. Follow-up question, Zach, why don't you just park the ambulance outside?
Yeah, it's the, the same thing, you know, the ambulance is highly regulated, we carry medications on there that can't go below a certain temperature. So, you know, obviously, that would be detrimental to someone if they needed that medication. So, you know, that has to be kept indoors, and, and, you know, at this, you know, we run one ambulance at this time, we, we're a municipal provider for that as well. So, you know, you know, there's certainly avenues that we can talk about how we work, you know, and what we do in the future, but right now, we have, we have to have a designated bay for that truck. And, you know, we, that, that truck runs 70% of our calls, is DMS, that's what we do.
I'm asking these questions because if people are out there wondering, why don't we do these other things? Why do we have to have a building? Why do we have to put the big trucks in a building? Why do we have to have the ambulance inside the building? Well, it is ridiculous. We live in New England, temperatures can get pretty frigid sometimes, and the last thing you wanna do is pull up to a house fire, hook up, and then realize your whole, all your lines are frozen because the truck was sitting outside all night. Or medications went bad because they were exposed to the elements, and they weren't temperature neutral. Okay? So there's, there's reasons why we have to have these special buildings for this equipment. It's to protect the equipment, and it's to protect the people that are protecting all of us. That's why we need to have these things. And we can't just stick 'em in a ranch house on some corner of a street somewhere.
And to the chief's point about the size of the bays, statistics nationally show that more firefighters are injured in the fire station than in the, at the fire station. And the reason is especially type B's is a big piece of that. Every fire department you go to will have a story about some accident that happened as the trucks were leaving the bays, whether it's a door that was left open, whether it was somebody that had a close call, you know, when you're responding to an emergency. It is a dangerous time, and having, having space to do that properly is incredible.
I mean, we, we've looked at different options, we've looked at and had conversations about adding to the basketball court and putting a couple extra bays there and stuff, but if you look at the footprint of the building, we do that, we just lost our entire parking lot. There's no other place to park. We've, we've taken that, you know, you know, availability out of there. So we're just, you know, we're kind of in a footprint right now where it's, you know, that's what we got. And, you know, to Jeff's point, I mean, if you go into the station and you look, I mean, there's enough room to walk behind the trucks to get to the gear racks, because that's it, that's all you got. You know, you gotta hug the wall to get to where the gear is around the trucks. Because again, they were just, they were built for, for times when they were force drawn, drawn, or, or much, much smaller, much smaller apparatus. And they're, they're just, these trucks are doing a lot more and carrying a lot more equipment than they ever did.
I, I have to say, the guys driving those trucks, amazing job back in the mid-'80s, because you have no room on either side. You see how close they are to the sides of the garage, and it's amazing job.
And the, and the drive-through bays eliminate some of that liability too. It helps to, it helps to, you know, to, to make it a little bit easier to get in and out of those buildings as well. And it's an advantage to getting, you know, getting the apparatus out and getting it back in as soon as you can.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
Hey, chief, if you think that your bays are small, you should see something.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, and honestly, no, you're, you're 100% right. I mean, Ware's Fire, Ware's Old Fire Station was the exact same way. In fact, it was probably tighter than that. You know, I mean, Palmer is a perfect example of it. They had to have their last engine, it probably cost them an extra $150,000 to buy that engine, because they had to fit it into that station. I mean, it's this close on the side. So, you know, it, those are all, those are all factors. I mean, New England is, is, is a wonderful place, it's the birthplace of our country, but it also is quite far behind, you know, the rest of the country in terms of their station designs and their infrastructure, because this was built, every, nothing was built, you know, it was not a planned, these were not planned, you know, they were not like you have out west or anything, where everything's a perfect little square and, you know, and replicates itself. It's, everything is, is unique, everything, every station is different. It's just, that's just what we deal with in the Northeast.
Anybody else have any other questions? Do you have anything else here?
No.
You, sir?
I do. So first, I wanna thank you for your presentation. I think you have very good skills explaining each one of the options. Right now, we have seen four options, one is not good. The other two are kind of like so-so, and there's one a little bit better. For the process, I would like to see, you know, the best option. So, because right now, we are, you know, putting pluses and minuses, but we don't know what is the A-plus of options. So we need something, this is the ideal from what you got from your program. This is your, your project. And then we compare all to this depending on the site and the constraints, so that way we can...
Absolutely.
Have a, a, that fair comparison. We don't know how much better is the option C, you know, to what we could have. Being, having said that, I also would like an option where we say, do nothing. And at the beginning, you mentioned that you were gonna do some education about the, for the residents about the cost and everything, I wanna see that option there. You know, trying to explain, what if we do nothing? You know, because it's, these places are going kaput.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So at some point, there's gonna be a collapse, and that has a cost. So you have all that experience, you can, you can share that, your knowledge, and, and that potential, where we say, well, let's just do nothing. Oh, wait, that's gonna cost us more.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I really like that. And like I said, thank you, you're very nice, very good at presenting.
Thank you.
And then I just have a, a question for you two guys, fire and the architect. In case of a two-story, did you, did you ask for that post that you go down like this? Is that in, is that in, is that in the program?
For two-story fire department, right? Those are traditional, but my, my personal opinion is, you know, I mean, you're always asking for additional injury if you send someone down, you know, I mean, it just, all it takes is one mishap, and you're sending someone...
But they're so cool!
They're, they're cool, and they're very traditional, but...
So guess why?
The goal, the goal in this, they honestly is to stay, is to, is to really try to stay at a one, one level building if possible. You know, you don't wanna, you know, once you get into your elevators and everything like that, you're talking about a whole nother realm.
So that, that was my point with this question, is, you know, there's a fact behind why stay at one level. And you just, you just told us, you know, a very important one, safety.
Yeah, no, it's, it's definitely something, you know, I mean, if you had to do a two-story, you know, there's ways to do that, but, you know, for compliance wise, you know, American Disabilities Act compliance and, and other, you know, agency compliance, you know, you're, you're gonna add huge to the price tag of getting into those, those types of things. So if it's avoidable, it's probably the best, definitely the best practice.
Thank you.
So polls, I gotta tell you a story, polls. For, for 15, 20 years, we did no polls, because the, the only knowledge out there was that too many accidents, too many people getting hurt. Well, then they, everybody was doing stairs, and then they started tracking records of firefighters tripping and getting hurt on stairs. And they sort of came to the conclusion, well, it's risk both ways. And so we do more polls now than I had, you know, the first part of my career. However, I was in Norwood, Massachusetts, where they have a very big public safety complex, multiple stories, and I met the firefighter that landed wrong and fractured his ankle and was out four months. And to this day, he's, I will never, ever go near a pole yet, and nobody else should either.
So, a number of years ago, we have a grant committee in town, and we have a pretty elevator in this building. And at that point, maybe five, six, seven years ago, it was $100,000 a floor. So, has that price changed?
Yes, it's more.
Okay. So that's the thing, so a two-story building, we're gonna add maybe $500,000 to the price of the building?
Two, $500,000, $300,000 for, for two stories, yeah.
Okay.
You know, and the thing about elevators, I mean, we have to use them because of the media act, as, as mentioned earlier, is they're the gift that keeps on giving, because you have to maintain them. And, and elevator maintenance people get more per hour than I do. They get more per hour than my lawyer, who gets way more than I do.
And don't forget that adding a second story adds more circulation, vertical circulation, stairs, and, and that's, you know, square footages is very, it's, are, is very expensive. So, and those stairs are not small.
Yeah, right. Well, it would, I imagine it impacts HVAC systems and electrical, like, there's a whole host of things that go along with now having things sitting on top of each other.
If you look at efficiency, a two-story building is more efficient than a one, because you have, you know, it's some, something less that you have to heat.
Yeah, sure.
Or cool. While it's up, it's bigger, but it's...
One foundation for two floors, one roof for two floors.
Yeah, okay.
In, that's true, that's, you know, conventional wisdom in New England, that's why we do
Yeah.
two-story houses with basements so often in New England, because less roof per, per living area, less foundation per living area. House examples don't really translate particularly to public safety complexes. There's, there's always...
There really wasn't any options though for a one-story, was there?
Any, not in sites that we don't...
Right, that's what I'm saying, the sites that we've done, there's no...
That's why I'm asking for the, the A-plus option, so we can compare. You know, you just realize that, you know, by saying that, but we have to be clear to everybody, all our options, and even do the worst ones, like on, on site D, where definitely, we can't build over there, but we, we have to justify everything.
So there, there are alternate sites that are probably gonna be much more conducive to what we want and give us everything we need, but it requires land acquisition, and that's why we can't discuss it in the public. 'Cause exactly as Kerry said.
Sir?
You mention it, and the value goes way up.
I'm, I'm really crossing my fingers so we can get a don or, you know, you know, come up with it.
Potential, potential.
We, we have the hope.
Well, we might get work.
We might get something from the football team.
Yeah?
They, they chicken.
They'll give you Belichick now.
All right, anybody else have any other questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Farrar, you?
No.
Nothing from the public anymore?
Yep. Actually, I'll, I'll ask one question. Uh, Stephen Russell, one time resident, uh, but on the Westport Field Public Safety Complex Building Committee. And I was just wondering, so it looks like for combined fire and police stations, about twenty-five thousand square feet. And you were saying that reducing the square footage does significantly reduce cost of the facility. So I was wondering if there's any type of numbers that you use in the current market to estimate the cost of say, the building, not the site work and all of that, but just say for building, uh, you know, about twenty-five thousand square feet.
There's, there's a lot to unpack in that question. I will say, um, we just recently did a, a substation for Bloomfield, Connecticut for their fire station. And we used seven hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for the construction before, um, um, bidding contingency or estimating contingency and before escalation. Now, that number means absolutely nothing to you because your site is, is gonna be different. It's gonna have different impacts. The way that you designed the building for a community like yours will probably be different. But, so what I just told you is sort of the mathematical basis for getting to your construction cost. Your project cost includes a lot more than that. You know, there's architectural engineering design fees. There's materials testing. There may be bonding fees. There may be, um, communications equipment that goes into that. So there's a lot of line items that you have to look at and say, is this in, is that out? What is the value of it before you get to that? You know, at this point, you know, I would say that if you, you know, if you looked at that seven fifty, you could go down some. And I've seen stations that go up significant from that point. But that's right now what we're kind of seeing in the market. We did hear some recent good news in Western Massachusetts from one of my OPMs who said he got low bids on the project. So there may be a little bit of softening in the market that could help us. You know, I don't know what it's gonna do in five years, but it's something that we keep track of all the time. We make sure our estimators are keeping track of all the time. So I, you know, at this point, until we actually nail down a site and start doing some conceptual design, I don't know what it costs.
Too early.
It's, it's, yeah, there's too many open questions.
Too many variables. Twenty million would be probably a safe estimate at seven fifty a square foot. I'm not saying that, but I'm not holding you, but I, I'm just trying to figure like, does it cost five million? Does it cost fifty million to build a facility?
Yeah, it won't be three hundred. Yeah, three hundred. I can guarantee it won't be three hundred.
Good answer.
We stayed where it was forty million.
Forty million, yeah, yeah.
That was a big station.
Yeah.
Forty something thousand square feet.
So there are a lot of different variables in what you're doing, what you get priced today. Mostly what you achieve next year or tomorrow. And it's only what somebody will bid for.
And the really good news is, is one thing I can say for certain, we've already seen the escalation rate decline. I mean, we were seeing some crazy escalation, particularly during pandemic years. We're seeing it return to what we saw before the pandemic. Um, that's good news.
Just a, for the ignorant among us, what's, what's escalation?
That's the, the increasing cost of construction year over year. And it doesn't keep track with, you know, the cost of food or the cost of gas and it, it does its own thing. You know, we, we see it anywhere from, you know, three, four percent all the way up to eight, nine percent. There were a couple of years, well, there's a span of a few years where we saw fifteen to twenty percent over that span.
So, so that's saying if you're working on a design now and then it takes you a year to kind of complete it to bid, it might've gone up eight, nine, twenty percent by the time you got to that.
Right now I would say you're probably looking at five to six percent.
Which is, seems more normal.
Yeah, which is not bad.
Yeah.
I'm doing a, doing a talk at the station design conference and it's, um, now is a terrible time to build. There will never be a better time to build. Because in my career, my, you know, my very first public safety building cost about ninety dollars a square foot construction cost. Ninety. Compared that to a seven fifty, I'd go.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else have any other questions? Can I answer your question?
Yeah, no, very good, helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Anybody on Zoom have any questions? Do we have people?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a few.
No, no question.
All right. Um, well, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We're gonna go through our agenda real quick and then we're gonna go into executive session. Because it doesn't, you know, we don't wanna go into an executive session and have to come back into regular session to finish out the rest of our stuff. So if you can bear with us for like ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll blast through this, right?
We'll blast through it. So we're gonna move on, on our agenda. So thank you, everybody. Uh, we will follow up and work, uh, after the meeting in an executive session to discuss all of the details. All right. So we're table, um,
Number two.
Number two. I'm gonna go to number three?
Yeah, we're not tabling it. We're gonna move.
We're gonna move forward. So in three, discussion impossible vote on the anti-discrimination and anti-arrestment officer for the town. Okay, right now it was me and Kerry. Are you guys still good with that?
Yeah.
Still good with that?
Yes, sir.
Do you guys want the position at all?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
No, no, wait. Let me read it. I'll make a motion to appoint David Dufrain and Kerry Schmidt as the town's anti-dis- annit discrimination? Anti-discrimination and anti-arrestment officers.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
I abstained because I'm on it. So. Motion passes. Okay. All right. Um, discussion impossible vote to get permission for the town clerk to lower the number of hours for early voting for election to twenty-five percent of the office hours. We have previously voted on this last year. She's doing the same thing. She's working two hours a day instead of seven hours a day. Correct?
Yes.
Uh, we approved this last year. Anybody have any questions about it?
No, sir.
No.
Any objections?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the town clerk lowering the number of hours for early voting for election to twenty-five percent of the office hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. Uh, communication from the board of assessors on the resignation of Patricia Place, uh, accessor clerk. Sorry, here you go. Um, and these things happen and you're gonna work with them to post it out there?
Yeah.
All right. Anybody have any questions about that?
No.
No, sir.
Moving on. Police chief's monthly report, December two thousand twenty-three. Chief, you're up. That's me.
Very well. Police, for the month of December, the police department logged eighteen hundred and fifty-six calls. Investigated sixteen felonies, had fifty incident reports, uh, seven on view arrests, two warrant arrests, fourteen summoner arrests, patrol twenty-three, three protective custodies, one juvenile arrest, a hundred and sixteen motor vehicle stops and sixty-eight citations. For the cars, you see a six-four was still out. Um, that's the one that we traded in. And the good news is yesterday we took possession of the new one.
Very good.
Tomorrow it's getting lettered up. On the second of December, uh, we all attended the tree lighting, which was a great event. Um, and kudos to the patrolmen because they piggybacked off that and did their toy drive. And the Grinch made a, made a little appearance. Uh, also on the second, the entire department went conducted, um, went through their yearly TASER training. That was conducted by Officer Williams who just completed his TASER instructor certification. So, uh, he did the training down at the PD. On the fifth, I attended a training hosted by our insurance carrier, Naya, on Title IX complaints. That will give us a small little benefit towards our premium. Uh, on the seventh, town administrator jumped for our, uh, by a chief animal boy. And I met with the architects from Tacton, um, to go over the current feasibility study. Uh, also on the seventh, uh, with the help of Principal Slattery from the elementary school, I did my annual, um, warrant police department holiday card and announced the winner from the fifth grade. I can't believe it's been five years, but I've been doing that now. On the twelfth, I attended a quarterly domestic violence task force meeting with Chief Prebev and Ware and Chief A. off of Harwood and Branche. Uh, also on the twelfth, I attended a meeting from, uh, about the post committee from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. On the twenty-first and twenty-second, I spent times at the schools for the holiday spirit. On twenty-first, uh, I helped the superintendent judge the door decorating contest at Quabog. And on the twenty-second, I went around to all three schools in the district with Santa Claus and the Grinch made an appearance. Uh, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Officer Warren and I attended Alice Instructor School. This is something we're gonna bring back to the schools for, uh, in regards to school safety, uh, after shooter stuff. Actually, we've talked about something that we should probably do here.
Yes.
What does Alice stand for?
Alice is an acronym for alert, lockdown, inform, counter and evacuate.
Wow, okay.
Aren't you glad, yes?
Yeah.
Very good. So basically run, hide, fight.
Run, that's another version of it.
And then get out. That's run.
Oh, okay.
Run. Run if you can. Can't run, hide. If you can't hide, fight. Great job, chief. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Very busy. Great to see that we get the new cruiser. Yes, it's good to see. No more hundred thousand mile cruisers on
That is very good to not see. Broken down on the side of the road.
Need to tell.
Yeah. Been there.
Great job. And for TASER instructor, for TASER training, did you volunteer for your exposure?
No, 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 no. They won't tase me because I have metal in me.
It just helps the current.
I tickled the wires. That's why. I feel a little joke. I'm not, my counterpart here though took a drive last year.
I did.
Worse, doesn't it?
Said I'd do it years ago. I did it. Wouldn't recommend it.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions for the chief?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Uh, next on the agenda, discussion impossible vote on the use of American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA funds for repairs to the generator at the Quabog Regional Middle High School in the amount of three thousand twenty-seven dollars and five cents. Anticipated vote. Do you guys have any questions about this?
No, I think we discussed this last time, right at the meeting. So we're all set with it?
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to use American Rescue Plan Act, um, money to pay for the repair to the Quabog Regional Middle slash High School generator.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following warrant, number thirty-six payroll, fifty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and forty cents. And we do not have a number for vendor, so skip that.
No vendor?
Well, we had a vendor warrant, but it came in late. And I, and then they picked it up before I wrote the number down.
Stay tuned.
Yep. You're gonna have to save it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Northeast IT, thirty-five hundred, thirty-one dollars. Modern Pest, a hundred and eight dollars. C2MA Adams, eleven hundred, forty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Comcast Business, hundred and forty-three, thirty-five. Crystal Rock, twenty-one, sixteen. Buffon Cleaners, a thousand five dollars. Warren Electrical, thirty-eight hundred, fifty dollars. Pine Ridge, a thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy cents. Bigelow Electrical, three thousand twenty-seven dollars and five cents.
Second.
Have any questions? Bills?
No.
Nope.
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, town administrator report. Did you have anything, sir?
I just have something, a very brief. Um, I just want to update the board. Um, we do have, um, the, a couple of job postings that are up right now. Uh, we have, uh, full-time and part-time police officers that have went live, um, that we're taking up until, um, the twenty-sixth of January. So if there's anybody out there looking to, um, submit a resume or a cover letter, uh, please go right on to the town's website. Uh, we also are having, um, our, um, our accountant's position. Uh, we have received, um, some resumes, uh, so far. That position is closing on January sixteenth. Um, and then after at that time, um, you know, I'd like to see if, uh, you know, a member of the board of selectmen, maybe the interim town accountant and myself could sit down and start reviewing some of them, um, and going over them in hopes to set up some interviews in the future, um, for that position. We've, we have received, um, uh, some promising, um, responses for the police, uh, position, um, uh, for full-time and part-time. Uh, we have quite a, a bit of resumes that have come back. I will be compiling them and giving them to the chief, uh, tomorrow to start his initial review of, of them. Um, I do want to also update the board that our capital planning committee, um, has been set to meet for Tuesday. Uh, that's at six, uh, that's at Tuesday, January sixteenth at four PM, uh, in the FinCon room. Uh, the agenda is posted. I do have a copy for you, right, of the agenda, um, for that meeting. And that will be our first meeting, kind of a organizational meeting, um, going over roles and responsibilities of the committee. Making sure that the committee members understand the updated bylaw. Uh, discussion of fiscal year twenty-five capital, uh, budget timeline. Um, going over the creation of a FY twenty-five capital budget and discussion of a, a, a four-year capital improvement program, uh, for the town. So those are the, those are the, um, items in which I anticipating that we're gonna be discussing. Um, along with, you know, the organizational aspects of the, uh, of the, um, of the, um, of the committee. Um, I do want to also make the board aware that this week, I don't know if they've seen in the newspapers, uh, but the governor has had some nine C cuts. Um, these are cuts that we've, you know, that I mentioned in our last department head meeting. Um, and these are serious cuts, um, that, that could impact, um, you know, um, you know, town services. Although the governor has said that, you know, uh, municipal side and school side are not part of her initial stages of the nine C cuts that are currently out there. There's, there's cuts that are out there that are, um, you know, related to nonprofits, organizations. Um, you know, some senior organizations. So we have to be mindful that, um, depending on how deep, um, you know, the deficit in, in, is with the state, they're projecting anywhere between, you know, seven hundred and fifty million dollar deficit. Um, you know, uh, you know, could potentially have impacts on, you know, on the town. Um, and nine C cuts are the worst cuts out there. Uh, because when there's nine C cuts that happens, those cuts are happening mid-fiscal year. We're already halfway through the fiscal year. So the cut has to be much deeper than if you were at the start of the fiscal year because you've already spent most of the money. So those cuts are, 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 are serious. They're real. Um, and, and so, you know, I, I, we're thankful that, 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 you know, the municipalities have not been impacted as of yet. Um, but you know, there could be some impacts, uh, towards, um, you know, nonprofits, senior organizations. Um, you know, some of our, some of our grants that, you know, that we could get, uh, from the state, um, you know, in the future could also be impacted.
Okay. Do you have anything else, sir?
No.
Uh, do you have any questions?
I do not.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on. New business. Anybody have any new business?
No.
No, sir.
Old business. Any old business?
No.
No, old business.
Okay. Uh, correspondence, uh, yes, assessors asked to have two announcements made by the board. First one, real estate abatement applications are due in by February first. So if you have an abatement application, uh, get with the assessors before February first. Exemption, um, exemption, um, applications are due by April first. So if you have an exemption app, application, have it in by April first. Okay? Comments and concerns, any comments and concerns?
I do not.
I, I have a little one, and, and I just wanna see if the, uh, police chief can help us on that. And I, I've seen an increase of, uh, trucks with junkyard cars in the back speeding up too much in town. Um, maybe like a, if you have time, like a little email to, you know, Copart and say, they're very good sending a memo to their drivers, that they're just going out of hand. You know, just.
Yeah, I had a full car carrier go through.
That's the one that was going with the phone like this.
Not so long ago, and it, that guy flew through the center of town. So, it was pretty dangerous.
There's a new manager at Copart, has anybody worked with her, or she seemed good?
Just, just tell them to send a memo.
Yeah. Patrick, yeah.
Patrick.
Patrick's gone?
Yes.
Patrick's gone.
To.
Yeah, they moved him to another facility.
Yeah. Up for a promotion for a regional.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Anybody from the public have any comments or concerns? Yes, Mr. Conrad?
Well, the board of health would like to thank the people that took the time to shovel out the sewer grates. It helped a lot with alleviating a lot of the flooding. There's still a problem at the corner of Main and Moore, and I assume that sooner or later, the sewer department's gonna have to literally pull that sewer apart. We are supposed to get another two inches of rain Friday night, Saturday morning, which will probably bring the cones back out to that area.
Thank you, sir, anybody else have anything? Anybody on Zoom have anything?
No.
All right, uh, next meeting is January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. There is no meeting for January eighteenth, because, uh, these guys are gonna be going to the, uh, convention in Boston and doing some training, getting some valuable information, um, so we will not have a meeting on the eighteenth, but we will have one on the twenty-fifth, and that is six P.M., uh, which is also a Thursday, and we welcome anybody to attend. Uh, with that said.
Oh, also, there's the master plan kickoff, also on the twenty-fifth, I don't know if that.
Yeah, we don't, I don't.
We don't have a time yet.
We don't have a time, we're not.
Yeah, okay, all right. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis. Just, um.
We're gonna adjourn and enter into an executive session.
No, we, what we could do is, is not adjourn this meeting, because it's part of our, our, um, our executive, uh, is listed within this meeting.
Okay, so we won't adjourn.
I'll take that motion back.
Yeah.
We'll have to enter into an executive session. With executive session, all public needs to leave, um, because we're discussing sensitive topics. On that note, Tecton and the chiefs remain, because you're part of this discussion.
Mr. Chairman, i- i- if you could, could you read just, um?
I can read?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so.
I make a motion to enter into executive session, um, to discuss, uh, new public safety municipal complex that are not owned by the town with a roll call vote to enter, and, and to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, anticipated vote. I so declare.
And we will not return to public session.
We will not be returning to public, um, session or journey after that, okay? Motion?
I'll, uh, so.
Second it's?
Second.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye. Oh, no, I get it, I know.
We are in executive session now.
Oh, yes.